Well. 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 I'm. Five was the last one. One of the. I called another four or six. And. Very. They're showing some. We have a question about. It was from.
How's that Jeremiah test, test?
Doesn't work.
No, not working.
Hello, hello?
I think it's working. Yeah, I can hear that.
Working inside.
Yeah.
She goes, hello?
Well, this is gonna be. Michael.
Yeah.
Why are you helping at the wedding?
Yeah.
I don't know how that's gonna work. I gotta find a way to talk. Well, I like Mariah.
I think it needs to be made at a time and frozen and we can bring it up in a cooler.
I'm not the one you need.
Well, but then she's the one baking it, so I don't care, you know?
Maybe, I mean, would you have her feelings if it wasn't frozen up?
No. But I'm glad to do it.
I'm gonna do.
Nancy does kind of a freelance or free 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 form.
With maybe the lines. Where.
Forty is.
Oh, no.
Oh. It's. I didn't hear. What? By.
Oh.
This is.
Great. Do I get answers? Things that I wanna. Say like your. And then by. Is for that. Try. And. I don't know. I'm. Ready to try. Well, I. Kind of. No one. Oh, because who likes? I'm sorry. Or she did. So those are. When. Right. So. Oh, yeah. I'm. Here. So. We've got. Then it's. Once. We've. Four. Right. Well, that's. West. Well, my other thing. I want. Down. You know. Thing.
There we go.
I know, I was looking at the clock up there though.
Somebody tall, reach up.
No. It's time to call the June meeting of the zoning board appeals to order. Uh, we have our roll call start with.
Yep, Koleski.
Here.
Chikovitz.
Yes.
Beely.
Here.
Strayer.
Here.
Berthold.
Here.
All members present.
All right, so we have a quorum, we're all set there. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from our main meeting. Everyone had a copy of those in their packet. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Mister Chairman, I reviewed the minutes and I moved that we approve them as written.
Support.
Most support, any discussion? All in favor of approval of minutes? Aye.
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 Pose. A minute's approved. Next item, new business. For five twenty College Avenue, a temporary use. Do we have somebody to speak to that?
Yeah.
Step up please and give us your name and kind of a brief summary of what we're, what you're asking.
All right, so my name is Darren Greewind, I'm the owner of Lenaway Recreation. And I'm just looking to get permits for our cornhole leagues on Wednesday and Thursday nights down there in the parking lot. Uh, it's Wednesday night, we have fifty cornhole, uh, cornhole teams down there, it's two player teams. Um, it starts at six thirty, seven o'clock and they get done about nine, nine thirty at night. Um, our Thursday league is basically a league we just started, it's thirty teams and it's all beginners like me, I don't play cornhole. But I've had a lot of people want to play cornhole, so we started up a new beginners league just to get them going on cornhole. Uh, starts the same time, uh, seven o'clock, gets over about nine, nine thirty. Uh, we do serve food and drinks down there, uh, served by bartenders and waitstaff. Um, we also have the onsite additional bar permits through the state of Michigan, which I have a copy of them if you need them. Uh, so we can serve alcohol out there. We have a uh, we're going with the orange snow fence out there around the parking lot and that's the area inside that is where they would be doing their drinking and their eating, they cannot go outside the orange snow fence uh, with their alcohol. Uh, the area measures a hundred and forty-one feet by two hundred and eighty feet. Um, that is approved through the state of Michigan, I cannot change that, it has to stay at one forty-one and two eighty. Uh, parking will be side streets, uh, we also have parking street or parking spots inside the parking lot. And we also have the permission from the old mill across the street to park in their gravel driveway over there. Uh, I did have written permission last year, it was, it's the same thing that we did last year, nothing has changed on the permission from the old mill, so they give us permission over there to use that. Uh, music, um, we're not having DJ or karaoke this year, we're just having speakers as background music, so it's nothing, nothing loud, it's just back, background noise. Um, we are respectful to all our residential uh, people that live in that area, so we try not to abuse how loud we get down there outside in the parking lot. Um, occasionally, we do have a fundraiser on the weekend, uh, but I was just, I would advise Jeremiah if there was something going on, um, give him heads up and then just see if we could get that approved. Uh, we only run a couple fundraisers on like a Saturday morning. Um, people will call me up and they'll just be like, hey, can we do a fundraiser, cornhole event in the parking lot on Saturday? Uh, Wednesdays and Thursdays are the days that we do our cornhole events because we don't have any league bowling going on down there, there's nothing going on. Monday and Tuesday are my leagues, Wednesday, Thursday would be my cornhole out in the parking lot. So, um, nothing has changed from last year on Wednesday night, it's still the same, we just added Thursday this year for beginners on cornhole.
That's about it.
Was your questions or? You mentioned parking on the street, you said?
Yeah.
Is that? Where does that fall?
Oh, well, so last year they had, uh, and he indicated they still have it a provision to allow, uh, also parking in the, the old mills parking lot, that made it okay last year, I assume you still got that same.
Same thing, yep.
Agreement those years, so that provides for the off-street parking that they need. You know, people may choose to park on the street, but they've committed to off-street parking.
And on-street parking is permitted there regardless, so.
Yes. Yes. Yep.
Right, but, but, you know, we have requirements for a minimum amount of off-street parking, but they were able to meet that last year with the the old mill parking.
Did we have any issues from last year?
Nope.
So, I didn't get any complaints, um, my, one thing I do want to point out is, is if, if you go to pass this, the resolution's gonna be different. Um, and the resolution says Mondays and Wednesdays, I maybe I misread his application.
You said it was Mondays and Thursdays? It's Wednesday, Thursday.
No idea why it says Mondays, Wednesdays. Was it Mondays and Wednesdays last?
No, we only did Wednesday last year.
No, I did.
We just added Thursday this year for beginners.
Okay.
So you'd want to note occasional weekends, now how many weekends?
I think we did two last year on Saturday mornings.
Not to exceed maybe four, uh, in the season or something like that.
Adrian College at Sienna Heights also reached out and they wanted to do some events, but I'll work, I'll get with Jeremiah on the dates, they have Friday, August twenty-fifth, they usually come in from like two to four for a couple hours, they bus them in and then they bus them out.
Well, be, be sure to kind of give us an idea because if they say four and you go past four, you're gonna have to come back again.
Right. Yeah, I usually work it out with the college and I tell them, because they do bowling and cornhole in the parking lot. So, yeah, if they say two to four, the bus is there at four o'clock, picks them up and they take them back to the school.
Do we have anyone in the audience to speak on this? I don't think we have any online, do we? I can see. Okay. Commissioners, questions?
It's a five-year renewal request, right?
So this is like the fireworks, you do one year and then you can do five? Okay.
And I, and I haven't had any complaints that I know of, I mean, I haven't chucked into the police station or anything, but I've gotten no complaints and I've sent out notices to the neighbors, so if they did complain, they would know of the meeting.
It's pretty low-key, it's.
Uh, yeah, I think he's did what we asked last time of keeping the music down and all that kind of stuff, so. Well, as with any, uh, like I said, down variants as a use permit, we have some items to look at. Down through these, the temporary use permits compatible with the various excuse me, with the various provisions in this chapter. Uh, the temporary use is compatible, so don't find a problem there for number one. Number two, temporary use is reasonable use of land compatible with the general plan, land use and zoning classification. Uh, this is zone, uh, is a temporary recreational and it's in the party of an existing recreational facility. So would find yes for number two. Number three, temporary use, feel free to jump in if anybody has anything to say in these. The temporary use will not impede the reasonable use of land or the orderly development of land in the immediate vicinity. Uh, the, where they have marked off in their parking lot. Don't see any reason why it could cause a problem with anybody else. Um, so I will find yes for number three. Number four, temporary use should not adversely affect adjacent uses, building or other structures. Uh, once again, when did just last year, didn't have any complaints, so so find yes for number four. Number five, the temporary use will not endanger the public health safety or general welfare. Um, don't see getting too wild of a cornhole game going, that's going to endanger anybody with, uh, cornhole bags being thrown around, so I would find yes for number five. Number six, the provision, uh, for adequate traffic access, circulation, off-street parking, pedestrian safety has been provided and maintained during the operation of the use or activity. Uh, he reviewed his parking, has some of his lot available, parking across the street and the area is gonna be cordoned off with the, uh, snow fence, so don't see a problem there. And number seven, that granting the temporary use permit is subject to those conditions necessary to preserve the general welfare, not the individual welfare or any particular applicant. Uh, like we said before, we didn't have any complaints last year, appears everything is in order, so I don't see any reason to, uh, have a problem with number seven, so I'll say yes for number seven. So going through, we have, uh, reviewed our items and if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I actually have two questions.
Okay.
Um, four-foot snow fence or six-foot chain link fence?
We got rid of the chain link fence because it likes to fall over on a windy day, so we, we got rid of that, so now we put the snow fence up now.
Okay, I'm just looking at two different things.
Yeah, so my, my assumption was it was gonna be exactly the same, but that was apparently not the right assumption.
And you are committing to five years of an old music, no bands, no DJs, no, okay. Thanks.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
I would move for approval of the application and adoption of the resolution of the corrections that we discussed earlier, that being that this cover from six PM to nine thirty PM on Wednesdays and Thursdays and occasional weekends not to exceed four in any one season.
We have a motion, do we have support for the motion?
Support.
We have motion, we have support. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Chikovitz.
Yes.
Beely.
Yes.
Strayer.
Yes.
Koleski.
Yes.
Berthold.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
There you go.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is for thirteen fifty-seven South Main Street, temporary use. We have someone to speak on that?
Uh, fireworks.
Yep. Come up and just give us your name and let's talk a little bit and give us a quick summary of what we're asking or what you're asking for.
Sure, Eric Potter. Uh, just temporary use to put a fireworks tent on the resale, um, uh, over the better by the Adrian Mall. So we, we've done it few years now, I think this is three years. Um, and we, this year we'll have to move down just a little bit further. He, he's okay with us using last year's. But you guys might know more than me as far as like where the, the whole process is of them building out on that, that a piece of property. Um, but we're looking at the one that was shown, the is that the fourteen?
In front of the former.
Yeah, fourteen seventy-six South Winter.
Front of Old National Bank.
Yeah, yeah, that, exactly, that piece of grass right there. And you can see with the tent, and we're not doing a cargo tainer this year. Um, just for anything that would impede anything else, so we're just a, a tent.
Is this storage that, so that's just a tent then, the storage?
Just a tent. Yep, so.
How will you secure your merchandise in the evening?
So twenty-four hours surveillance we'll have on, on the tent, yep. Yeah, I know that not only for us, so nothing gets stole, but that is a state requirement, that we can't leave it, so. Yeah, we've done, so, so this will be since twenty twenty, we've had as many as eighteen tents one year. Um, that's too much, we're just doing two this year, but we currently still own Chant Berger and then Little Caesar's in to come soon. Um, so it's kind of like a side project thing that is kind of fun to do and.
So you, I know, I don't think we talked about it, but you do know this is just one year because it's moving.
Yeah, yeah, and it was our.
Where the cars.
Uh, we had the wrong understanding that the first time was a five-year, that was like a.
Yeah, that was. Now, so this will be a one-year, so this is where they keep you, you can apply for a five if, if they approve.
Okay.
Just because we didn't discuss that.
No, can, can I ask if they did, um, I know we, because it's coming here in two weeks, we're gonna set up and all, but if, if that other spot was still available, are, are we able to get approval for either or does it have to be right now?
As it is right now, the the notice is for the entire property. But they can't review what you, the packet doesn't have what you had last year, so they wouldn't be equipped to review it again. I guess, so like, and I can allow my supervisor to speak on it.
Well, I'd agree that we're reviewing what's in front of us, so it's this location.
Okay.
We're not able to tell where cars are gonna park.
Right.
From your.
From, from that one, yeah, so there's that, um, yeah, it is zoomed in a little bit. Um, they're right next to it is that, that fruit stand or the, that roadside stand.
Yes.
That's right there, there's a lot of parking there, yeah, yes, to the west, yeah, it's directly there and this, this isn't a busy obviously pole-in section, um, right there, but that's what we're planning on and.
So you'd be parking in the park, they'd be parking in the parking lot behind where the fruit stand is, which you could be parked, but then they're gonna have to walk across that road to get to your.
Right, right, now we, I don't know if there's any, um, like we walked the property and all, but if there's, if we can adjust the tent, so we could, we got cones and stuff, is there anything, any pushback on if we were to set up, you know, in other cities, we've done that where we've kind of coned off in grass, like a couple, like four spots or something, does it?
You mean up next to the tent?
Or I know we gotta stay away from, but in, in this grass area, if.
Yeah, we don't want parking in the grass.
Okay.
Yeah, parking, parking lot.
That's fine.
Jeremiah, have anything you want to add to this? So I, I guess what, what they're talking about, I guess I'd like to see some sort of signage that you could bring to me, if, if they would be agreeable to that, to see how you're gonna funnel people, I guess, because you are coming across two processes, I'm just a little, little concerned.
Is that, um, is it okay to block that road off? Or anything, obviously getting the permission through them, but.
That would actually be I would find that preferable, that's gonna be an issue between you and your, and your landlord.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
That's just a private drive, right?
Right. Cars, I know it is.
Yeah, it's private drive.
Yeah, but we could, uh, if we decide to, uh, pass this through, we can put the condition in that we need to get the parking situation or the road situation uh, approved, Jeremy needs to approve that. My, my only concern is I guess if you're going over towards like Buffalo Wild Wings and things, people do cut yeah, through there, so.
Well, it's part of the drive access for Old National Bank too, so.
So I, I would say.
It's really up the you know, so I mean, if the landlord proved it, I guess for temporary use would be okay, but.
Surprised if they would.
Yeah, I would be too, because I would suspect their lease doesn't allow them to do that.
Right, yeah. Well, some, I guess some.
It almost be.
Or something. The effect that show cars, there will be people walking across there in, in some warmer fashion. See someone get.
Oh, I got you. Yeah, that, that other area was, like, I didn't realize how busy that actually.
I just, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and I've let them know that is one of the concerns I have.
Okay.
That, you know, walking from that area through a, like, two points that enter just scares me a little.
One, in, based on where our tent will likely be, depending what Mystic says, right, back in that side, we're hoping that they'll cross towards that back area too, there's quite a bit of space.
Yeah, I think the southern entrance doesn't get as much traffic as the winter entrance does, because it's, to be honest with you, a, a pothole ridden one.
Yeah, yeah, people kind of.
But our, our motion could contain some condition on the parking, it needs to be worked out with Jeremiah though. Yeah. We can include that in the motion?
Uh, yeah, you could do that.
Okay. Yeah, it doesn't sound like that has to be necessary, but. But just so.
Yeah, no, I'll communicate with you for sure.
Staff's opinion.
Yeah.
Do we have anybody in the audience to speak on this? Uh, I don't see anybody online to speak on this. Any other questions from the Commissioners before we go down through our finding of facts? Okay, hearing none, we'll go down through just like we did for our last one. Number one, the temporary use permits compatible with the various provisions of this chapter. Uh, it's compatible because it is zone commercial and it's a temporary use retail sale, so that fits into that, so I'll find yes for number one. Number two, temporary use is reasonable use of the land compatible with the general plan, land use designation and zoning classification. Once again, it's commercial and they're asking for basically a commercial temporary use, so find yes for number two. Number three, the temporary use will not impede the reasonable use of land or the orderly development of land in the immediate vicinity. Uh, and with, with the, um, to, 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 okay. Throw it off here a second. The tent is being placed on land that is a, a property of the mall, but could impede the, the bank. So we just need to make sure that we're square on that. And, uh, but where the tent's going to be is not going to impede anything, so I'd find yes for number three. Number four, the temporary use shall not adversely affect the adjacent uses, buildings or other structures. Uh, I don't see how this is going to affect anything, it is a, once again, uh, retail sale and it's not either, so I don't see any problem with number four, so yes for number four. The temporary use will not endanger the public health, safety or general welfare. Uh, I assume, uh, once again, that this property has to meet all the firework regulations and fire regulations and uh, from what I understand, that's been done and will be done, so, uh, fine for, yes for number five. Number six, provisions for adequate traffic, circulation, off-street parking and pedestrian safety has been provided for or be maintained during the operations. Uh, we've had a little bit of discussion on that particular thing issue, so, uh, I will say yes for number six. Uh, and then we may contain something in our motion in reference to that. And number seven, that the granting of temporary use permit is subject to those conditions necessary to preserve the general welfare, not the individual welfare of any particular applicant. Uh, once again, is if we grant this, it's a conditional use and during the hours, I'll find yes for number seven. So based on those finding of fact, we can entertain a motion if there are no further questions.
I would move that we approve the request for temporary use, uh, subject to the, uh, date and times that the applicant has specified and also subject to approval by staff for some signage that would direct pedestrians as to where to park and how to get across the, the side street.
Hey, we have a motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have a motion and support for the temporary use with the conditions that were listed. A discussion on the motion? Roll call? Beely?
Yes.
Strayer?
Yes.
Koleski?
Yes.
Chikovitz?
Yes.
Berthold?
Yes.
Motion passing hands. They're all set?
Thank you very much.
He just has to get with Jeremiah on the parking or signing situation.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is for four oh four North Dean Street, dimensional variance, do we have someone to speak on that? Well, please and give your name and give us a little, uh, summary of what you're asking for?
Uh, my name is Zach Bach, I'm here for a variance for the lot size for a doggy boarding facility. Um, currently, the property was rezoned recently to the Iowa one industrial district, um, which does allow for dog boarding facilities within there with a minimum of lot requirement of one acre. Uh, this current lot is point nine eight, so it is point zero two acres shy of the required ordinance. So we're looking for a variance, we can go ahead and move forward, working with Jeremiah to get the certificate of occupancy, a site plan and all the other documents that he needs for opening a facility.
You're currently operating?
They're using a dog daycare, so they're there for a couple of hours during the day, not boarding all night.
Have we talked about just that building right on the corner?
Correct.
That other longer building, that's a storage building, so it has nothing to do with the.
Nothing to do with that.
So Jeremiah or Greg, you kind of just helped me out here a little bit, the whole issue with this is just the size of the lot? Or do we have other issues that we're looking at here or?
Well, I would say there are other use, issues with the use, but the issue before you is the lot size. Well, I would say there are other use issues with the use, but the issue before you is the lot size, so. The zoning ordinance places a one acre lot, minimum size on this particular use. Um, within the I one district, when they opened, they were actually zoned warehouse. Which did not allow for this use at all. We subsequently eliminated the warehouse district and rezoned all warehouse lots to I one. Which made them an allowable use. But only if they had a one acre site. They do not have a one acre site, hence their before you. Uh, requesting the variance as it relates to lot size, so. You know, that is, that is the issue before you. I don't, I would not say that's the only issue with respect to the use, but that's what's presented to you tonight.
Well. If I would suggest it comes to us too then, though, is this an. Is this an appropriate location for this particular type of business?
Well, that is, I mean, there's a reason why.
Variance by, I mean, that's, there's a reason for having a minimum lot size.
That's correct. And and, you know, in in some respects, it's in the nature. Of a use variance to suggest that you could have a smaller lot size and have the same use that's not permitted on a smaller lot. It is, it it that point becomes a question of use, but. Um, you know, I I mean, the request is for a dimensional variance as it relates to acreage, but there are those aspects to it. Um, that do come into play. Obviously, the drafters of the zoning ordinance, planning commission presumably at the time that they drafted that provision. Thought that you needed a certain module of land to make a. Dog boarding facility or pet care facility a reasonable use within that district.
Do we have anyone in the audience to speak on this? If you kind of come up, please, and give us your name and. Let us know what it is. We should hear from you.
Thank you. My name is Carol Reese, four one five North Dean Street. Um. There's been an issue with um dogs barking. For hours. And they have been there um. All day, some days. Um, they've built a privacy fence between the. Building on the corner and the long storage building, so we can't see in there, but I know it's. It's quite a small area for a number of dogs to be. There's no place for them to run. So I don't know if it's an appropriate place for dogs to be boarded. I don't know if this is the time or place for that, but um. If it wasn't bad enough, not able to sit on your porch with the crimson smell, it's sitting on the porch listening to the dogs barking, so. It um, we are a neighbor neighbor that lives right across the street and we have concerns. And my cousin, the homeowner, lives with me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak on this? I don't see anybody online at this time.
Jeremiah or Greg, could you explain to me? Come on.
Okay, okay.
Speak into it, so we can.
Okay, sorry. Uh, in the staff review, item number one, I do not understand what those numbers are saying to me. Could you explain that?
So the the minimum size for a. Building in the buildable area of a lot is twenty thousand square feet in I one. With the light industrial.
The minimum size of a building?
The buildable area.
Okay, but there and theirs is forty.
Forty thousand four hundred eight, so they're they're double. Um, in size, so it it. Is usable. For a reasonable use in the I one.
So the, your your point was that it it. It's not.
It's not too small.
It's not too small to be used as an industrial. Yes, right.
But a doggy daycare requires one acre.
The doggy daycare in this particular instance requires one acre.
Okay.
Which. Another industrial use does not require.
Got it. Thank you.
So the built, so the property could be used for something other than. Dog, dog boarding.
Yes.
How long have you been operating at this location?
Uh, I own the property now, the business.
Okay.
So they've been operating. Um.
I'm sorry, can I have you go back to the mic so we can, we do have maybe somebody online listening?
Uh, they've been operating for just over a year. Or just under a year.
And when did the fence go up?
Uh, before they opened.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you know if there was a permit get uh taken off of the fence?
The fence is actually not affixed to the ground. It's used, it's held up with like cinder blocks. So it can be moved. So it's not actually built into the ground.
Okay. Do you know if if there was a permit issued for it?
That I do not.
Okay.
There was no permit.
Okay.
So this has come up now because of the rezoning.
Well, it became an issue. Uh, we got many complaints about it. Um. For the dog, barking dogs, we became aware of that. Uh, we should have noticed violation, I think. Um, and uh. We rezoned the property as part of our overall update of our zoning districts related to the uh. Adoption of the new comprehensive plan, we're eliminating warehouse district. Uh, so they, it was fortuitous for them in that regard and that they then became an allowed use, but. Uh, at the point where they were then at least in allowed use, we offered them the opportunity to apply for the variance because. Uh, they still are not permitted uh on a lot of the size, but. You know, they they opened without permission and without a certificate of occupancy or selling compliance certificate.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Well. Is there a grassy area for the dogs when they're let out or, because when I drove by, I didn't see that, but then I was looking through.
The fencing area has a small rock. In it to allow for the dogs to be able to use the bathroom and it still be able to be washed away. In a timely manner, as well as being able to be picked up easily.
And then how many dogs are going to be allowed to come and use the facility?
That I'm not aware of, but there is a certain limit for how many animals can be within the facility. Currently, I believe they can only house up to about eight.
Questions, uh. That don't really uh pertaining to the zoning issue, but um. Obviously, when the planning commission was looking at doggy daycare or whatever. They said, okay, you have to have at least an acre. Um. And they probably are thinking so that. It won't be uh. A problem like with barking and things. So on one hand, I know the location of the building is 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 really close to the houses across the street. So I guess what I'm wondering is. If it's possible that that. Business can actually be pushed back further on the lot. So that it would not be so close to the houses. But also I'm wondering. What time of the day are we hearing the barking? Is it during the day or is it in the evening or?
I guess I have a que- question. I guess I don't know who to direct this to, whatever, but. The idea of having one acre, I assume, is to have enough room for whatever you're boarding, to have room to run and do and. And also some uh, some boundary from the existing neighboring property. So if you have almost one acre here, just shy of one acre, but the facility plan they're using. Is. Way, way smaller than that. Does that come into play with anything or?
I think that's something you can consider in evaluating the request, whether it meets the intent of the ordinance. Uh. You know, I I I think you fairly represented what the planning commission probably had in their mind when they drafted that provision of the ordinance. When some buffering from neighboring uses, sufficient amount of space for. Uh, dogs to be able to go outside and relieve themselves, et cetera, and uh. So I think that's relevant to your uh evaluation of whether or not a smaller lot size in this circumstance. Because the smaller lot is related to this particular circumstance and this particular set of. Facts, and so it is relevant what the size and building is, where it is on the property and what its proximity to neighboring uses would be.
Are the dogs outside all day long?
No.
Okay. Uh, are they all let out at one time, at the same time every day?
It'd be various times, depending, and if the dog's wanting to go outside, just as if your dog is wanting to go outside.
You're the owner of the property, but you do not have anything to do with the business. Is that correct? Okay. Could we talk about the pavement question? Someone explain to me whether that's relevant or not?
Uh, it's not before you that I think the applicant made some.
Okay.
Remarks about it in their application, but uh, a requirement for this use would be a paved parking lot, and there is not currently a paved parking lot.
But that's not our concern.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
I'll assume they have to have one.
Well, before they'd be allowed to occupy, but of course they occupied without a seal.
Any other question? Go ahead. Um, Jeremiah, we had uh.
Multiple complaints on the noise issue. Uh, is it just?
Code code enforcements had. Two or three houses complain. I want to say two at least.
Uh huh.
Um, I spoke with. Um, the man that spoke earlier.
Mm hmm.
Um, other than that. It's, so I I'm aware of three.
Okay, okay. Did we receive any written or phone? Comments uh on this issue?
Um, only from.
All just ones we're already, ones we're already aware of. Okay, thank you.
Anybody, anything else before we go down through finding a fact? I'm like.
I just feel like if you have a piece of land. And you want to have this type of business. That you, and you were starting from scratch. You wouldn't put that building where it's at. You would put it back to the other end of the lot.
And you would also check on what the ordinance permitted. If you were starting from scratch.
True.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've had other. Issues over the past where something has been done that wasn't allowed and then. People ask for forgiveness, so to speak, and we always try to approach this of. What would we do if it was just coming to us from the beginning and we can't look at that? Well, they've already done it. We don't want to, you know, that way. So I think we just need to. Can keep going the same way here as. If this was coming to us without having anything been done, would we grant such a request? Anything else before we go down through the findings?
Go for it.
Okay. We have some finding fact. Now, this is a a dimensional variant, so it's a little bit different findings that we have to do compared to the two we just did with the temporary use. Number one.
Hmm.
There are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships will prevent carrying out the strict letter of the ordinance. These hardships or difficulties shall be uh, shall not be deemed economic. But should be evaluated in terms. Of use of a particular parcel of land. Uh, this parcel is compatible being used for various uses. The problem comes because of the uh, wanting to use it as a doggy daycare or whatever. It does not meet that requirement. Um. I'm having trouble finding for number one. Anybody else want to jump in?
The strict letter of this ordinance helps me.
Yeah.
Understand what I want to, what I need to say about that, so. Strictly speaking, it is not an acre.
So I'm going to say no for number one. Once again, if there are anybody objecting, please jump in. Number two, the genuine hardship exists because of unique circumstances. Or physical conditions such as narrowness, shallness, shape, topography of the property involved. Or to the intended use of the property that do not generally apply to other property uses in the same. Zone district and shall not be recurrent in nature. Uh, the property meets the requirements as far as uh. Minimum lot size and coverage. But it does not, well, okay, meets the requirement for that, but it comes back to the use again, so.
Yeah, you can't, yeah, you can't answer yes for number two.
No, I. No, for number two. The hardship or special conditions or circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. Well, the applicant did not make the lot size, but the applicant did decide to put a business in there that required a bigger lot. So um. I would find that uh, it is. A result of the applicant's action. I would find no for number three. Pardon? Okay. Okay, throw me off there. Number four, that the variance. Uh, will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this ordinance. And will not cause a substantial adverse effect upon surrounding property, property values and the use and enjoyment of the property in the neighborhood or district. Uh, that kind of comes down to what we've been discussing and what we've heard from neighbors already. That uh, it is causing an issue. Of the enjoyment of their property. Uh, which once again goes back to why. The ordinance requires. An acre of land. So I would find no for number four. Number five, that grain of variance will not confer the applicant any special privileges that's denied by these ordinance. To the other land, structures or buildings in the same district. Um, once again, anybody else could claim for, could apply for that, so I will find yes for number five. Number six, that the variance requested is the minimum amount necessary to overcome the. Inequality inherent to the particular property or to mitigate the hardship. Um, I would say yes for number six, because certainly what they're requesting is the minimum. Um. And number seven, that the variance shall not permit the establishment within the district. Or any use which is not permitted by right within the zoning district. Or any use for which a special use permit or a temporary is required. And once again, I would. So. Would find for, yes, for number seven. So going through the findings of fact. Uh, found no for one, two, three and four, yes for five, six and seven. And uh. Based on that, as I guess I did not mention before, but to grant a variance, we need to find yes for all items. Hey? So based on the findings, I will entertain a motion.
Um, go ahead. Based on the findings, uh. As you just drove stated, Mr. Chairperson, uh, and a number of them being in the negative, I would move that uh, the. Variance be denied and the resolution as staff has provided be adopted.
We have a motion. We have support.
Support.
Or.
Barely.
Yeah, barely. I support. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yep, Strayer.
Denied, yes.
The vote is, the vote is to deny the request.
Yes.
Koleski.
So we are supporting the.
The guy.
Yes, yes. Skobitz?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Berthold?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
So the variance is not granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move into old business, was we were uh, had some discussion last month. Three sixty Michigan Ave, a temporary use.
How are we doing?
Okay, I had to give us a, just a, another quick little overview. I know we had some questions last time, so where are we at this time?
Dan Alcorta from the Old Tomato Factory downtown. Uh, it was a flea market we were in the process of and just wanted more details of where the tents were going to be, the parking. I also forgot to tell you that there. It's only one house down there. And I already spoke to the lady and she's gun hold for it. Uh, the other two houses are abandoned. And I own the rest of the empty lots that are down there. So there's only one person to deal with in a situation down there, but she's good with it. And um. We did a drawing and that Jeremiah has a drawing. For that you guys got. The big one. You got a bigger, there was a bigger one.
They they have the same one, it's just in a.
Okay, got it. I'm sorry. And uh, we just one that I had in the parking lot I showed and I showed where the tents would be in the restroom.
Where is the restroom?
It would be a porta potty for the people, but the. Across the street, I have a building also that I can. Also do. Sorry. For the vendors, I have an indoor bathroom for them. It's all gated. I showed you where the little, little dot there, I had a little lines there lined up for a gate to go in, so it's all gated. Ten foot fences all the way around. And that's basically all that you guys wanted me to tell you about last time.
This request would be for a one year?
For a summer.
Or, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the initial request for a temporary use, one year, yeah.
Mr. Alcorta, I, I gotta tell you, I, I'm uh, after having looked at this and driven by the property a couple of times, I'm kind of concerned about this, that this, that this, first of all, this is I guess, I guess my big concern is this property is served by a one-way street, Nelson Street.
Nelson Street coming down, but George Street, George Street is left in.
And Nelson Street, a one-way street.
Yes.
And George Street that is barely two cars wide without curbs or sidewalks. Uh, this strikes me as just asking for difficulty in terms of where the parking is going to be because we don't have any marked parking spots.
Oh, we have indoors, it'd be inside the gate.
Uh, but they aren't, it, that's just a big paved, there's no, there's no marked parking lots.
Well, I didn't mark it because I didn't know how far you wanted me to go. I mean, I could mark lines on, on my gut. I have thirty spots.
I'm, I'm concerned that this is just going to be kind of a traffic nightmare in terms of people getting in and out of here down George Street or Nelson, the one-way street. And then to add to that, the intersection of George and Michigan is a really, really bad intersection. I, I, every time I pull out of that George Street onto Michigan Avenue, I fear for my life thinking somebody's coming from, you know, from uh, from the east there because you can't see over the hill. Um, you know, this property wasn't intended for retail use. It was intended for industrial use where there's a few employees there as opposed to how many car parking?
Well, we had a tomato, he had a tomato factory there, so it was a big factory at one time. He had a business on the other side.
Parking spots do you have laid out here?
I can have like thirty parking spots.
Uh huh.
With thirty vendors.
And parking lot, yeah. Okay, so where do the vendors park?
The vendors can park in my street across, right across from my other building and my other lot.
Okay.
So they're not even subject to even being, uh, being in the parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, which is not paved. I don't think.
It's rocky, it's, it's old rock from a long time ago with grass going over the top of it.
Sidewalks, there's no curbs.
That's the city's ordeal. I mean, that's how it's been.
This property wasn't designed for retail use.
But there's sidewalks on Nelson Street, both sides.
Well, those are my concerns.
Correct. And my concern is that you got the road blocked off that we can't get through on Michigan Avenue, which is not my fault either.
Even more so, that, you know, there's a.
But I mean, that's, that's, that's an issue that is not.
There's a limited, limited egress and access to this property because College Avenue was blocked off right at the end of George Street.
Uh, but it's able to be used because we use it all the time going over the bridge, so it's usable.
Yep.
And we go right to Zizi's with it. That's where everybody goes. Everybody uses my lot, like, everybody uses that street until that road got blocked off. That street was a hundred percent usable all the time.
Mm hmm.
There was hundreds of cars that come down that road before that road got blocked. And there's still people that come down that road.
Commissioners, any other questions at this time? Anyone in the audience to speak on this? Please come up, give us your name and tell us what you have to say.
Scott Holtz, three, three, six Ferguson Avenue. Um, I do not live directly in the block that butts to this property, but it is very much a stone's throw away. My concern is that we're looking at a zoning variance when we're currently not following current city ordinances. The vacant parcel um, ordinance defines that these parcels should not be overgrown. They're very overgrown and not just overgrown, but now we have a camper in the middle of one of them. I just have concerns that if we're not following current ordinances, how are we going to be able to follow the rules that you dictate? Thank you.
We are looking at a use permit, temporary use permit. And I understand your concern. We are trying to address the use of that land. The condition of the land falls for somebody else, unfortunately.
Yeah, can I speak, can I speak on that behalf? I don't own that.
Sir, your time to speak is over.
Right here.
You can have a seat.
Yeah, right here, thank you. Uh, anyone online to speak on this? Hey, someone online to speak to it, okay?
That's not my lot.
Commissioners, uh, if there are no further questions, let's go down through the finding of fact. Once again, we're back to a temporary use. Similar finding uh, that we had for their first two. And feel free to jump in on these, please, when we come to these. Number one, the temporary use permit is compatible with the various provisions of this chapter. Well, the land is zoned industrial. And the uh, future land use is mixed, maybe mixed as residential. And this is considering putting in a commercial piece of, or using it for commercial. And um, commercial would not be compatible with either one of those industrial or uh, mixed residential. Unless I'm missing something? Anybody in agreement? Uh huh, okay. So I would find uh, no for number one. Number two, the temporary use is reasonable use of land compatible with the general plan, land use designation and zoning classification. Uh, once again, we're kind of back very similar to number one. It is uh, he's asking for a temporary commercial use uh, into an industrial property. So uh, it is not compatible with the general plan. So I would find no for number two. That the temporary use will not impede the reasonable use of land or the orderly development of land in the immediate vicinity. Um, I guess I'm a little bit mixed on this one.
I'm not persuaded, since he's asking for one year, that.
Well, that's all, that's all we're dealing with right now.
Right, since he's asking for only one year, I'm not persuaded that inhibiting future residential land use is an issue.
Yeah, that's where I'm at with number three also. I would find yes for number three.
To me.
Number four, the temporary use shall not adversely affect the adjacent uses, buildings or other structures. Um, once again, it's kind of hard to say that they're going to adversely affect their use of buildings when other, all of them except one building he owns already. So uh, it could be a traffic issue, but there's only one residential house there, what are you saying?
Well, one, I would say, Mr. Chair, one is all that it takes. Uh, there is a residential structure right next door.
Okay.
And they have not complained to us.
They have not. I would assume it's probably a rental. Um, they may or may not know, but, but, you know, I don't think whether or not they articulate a complaint is necessarily uh, an indication of whether or not it could adversely affect the use.
And, and there are other, there are other occupied properties on Nelson Street uh, of which will enjoy, which will have increased traffic on it as a result of this.
Hey, so I would find no for number four. Number five, the temporary use will not endanger the public health, safety or general welfare. Uh, that kind of comes back to what has been a discussion with the uh,
Traffic.
Traffic issue. So uh, I would find uh, no for number five. Number six, provision for adequate traffic access, circulation, off-street parking, pedestrian station have been provided and will be maintained during the operation of the use of the land. Uh, boy, there's a lot there and I think there's a lot that we said we don't feel comfortable with or see being provided. So I would find no for number six. Number seven, if the grain of the temporary use permit is made subject of these conditions necessarily preserve, preserve the general welfare, not the individual welfare of any particular applicant. Um, this could be, let's see. If we prove this, it could be a function appropriately on the property that applicant, uh, appropriate conditions to address issue need to be added and known in the development, so I would say yes for number seven. And uh, that takes us through our items. So according to my notes, item one is no, two is no, three is yes, four is no, five is no, six is no, and seven is yes.
Well, and unlike a variance, a temporary use permit does not require that we make it full fine, you know, uh, full affirmative fine.
Right.
So based on that, we can entertain a motion.
Your turn.
I'm, no, I should not make this motion.
Given the number of negative findings uh, and, and the concern for the increased traffic and the, and what I consider inadequate uh, uh, street and infrastructure around this property, I would move to deny the application for uh, temporary use and move adoption of the resolution with that denial.
We have a motion to deny the temporary use. Do we have support?
Support.
We have support. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Yep.
Beely?
No.
Jacobitz?
Yes.
Koleski?
Yes.
Strayer?
Yes.
Berthold?
Yes.
Motion passed for yes, one no.
Okay. Any other items to come before us? Planning commissioners waiting anxiously.
Do you want to explain what our vote meant?
It was a denial.
I understand that, but does everyone in the audience?
Okay.
It's important you need to say it's denied.
Oh yeah, the motion was to deny, so uh, anything else? Stuff you want to say, Greg?
No, no, um, uh, we included, I'll just note for you in your packet, was a scope of work for our zoning ordinance rewrite that we're going to start working on. Uh, we hope the planning commission is going to appoint some members to an advisory committee tonight. Um, if any of you were interested in serving on that, uh, member of the ZBA could also serve on the advisory committee or even a member that's also on the city commission could serve on the advisory committee, but uh, let me know if you're interested, uh.
I'm interested.
Okay, thank you, Cindy.
Um, Cindy will be the ZBA representative.
Right on, and uh, we hope to kick that off, uh, we are going to kick that off very shortly later this month, so uh, about to get underway on that.
All right. Anything else for the good of the cause? Have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So. Support.
In favor, I? Opposed. Meeting is done, planning commission will begin in just a few minutes.
So. Who, one else? I gotta change my name, please.
I got to see you later.
My nine is very.
Difficult meeting today.
I agree with guys. Yeah, 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 yeah. This is Weatherby. How are you? Brian, Brian isn't not going to be here, so.
What's that?
Brian's not here, he's going to be here tonight, so.
Planning, everybody has a plan.
Yeah. So everybody's got planning, right?
Let's get this show on the road. Yep, just waiting for Jeremiah to get back from the meeting. Yes. Okay.
It is?
Folks, we will call to order the June sixth meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. Um, Greg, if you could take a role for us?
Yes, sir. Uh, Jacobitz?
Here.
Love?
Present.
Weatherby?
Present.
Johnson? Watson?
Watson is excused.
Taylor?
Present.
Gaus? All members present except for uh, Commissioner Watson, uh, you do have a qualm.
Thank you, sir. Um, first item on our agenda then is consideration of the minutes from our May meeting. Commissioners, you have copies of those minutes. I presume you've had an opportunity to review them. Are there any additions or corrections to the May minutes? Mr. Taylor?
I just have one on case number twenty-three oh seven.
Mm hmm.
Ordinance amendment, um, I think we should say that it was for marijuana drive-through and, and curbside, because if you look at the next ordinance amendment, we actually explain what it's for. Okay.
Okay, yes, okay.
Because there was, I mean.
Jacobitz discussed the ordinance amendment to the commission regarding Jacobitz discussed the ordinance amendment to the commission regarding the addition of marijuana drive, drive-through facilities at marijuana dispensaries.
Isn't the next one we refer to heights of accessory bills?
Yes.
But people might say, well, what is it we're approving?
Adding a little verbiage here.
Right. Got it.
Where we just described what we were talking about.
Yep, got it.
Okay. Any other additions or corrections to the May minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next item is the creation of a zoning ordinance committee. Uh, as I believe most of you are aware, uh, city commission has authorized the uh, pretty much from scratch rewriting of our zoning ordinance, and they have engaged with the Smith Group uh, to guide us in that endeavor and included in your packet was the uh, scope of work statement from the Smith Group. And we are forming a committee to deal with that, or I shouldn't say deal with them, but to work with them on that uh, on that project. Um, Mr. Watson has volunteered uh, to be the representative from the planning commission.
He has two, two times as a matter of fact.
He has two.
And it would be one. As will the entry, there will only be one member?
No, no.
I'm I'm doing excellent serving.
But, okay. Well, no, that's that's fine. There's a, there's a small finite. We don't want this to be a twelve-person committee, I don't think. Uh, but Don, you're fine. That's.
I'm not so sure. I'm fine, but I'm happy to do it.
Okay. Um, yes. Okay, um, we probably only need two from the, from the planning commission, I would suggest.
We, yeah, we.
I would think that.
So we have one from the ZBA and some more ones in the city commission.
Lot that bears on downtown, obviously Jeremiah and I would be there. So I would say two from planning commission uh, would be sufficient.
Okay. Um, Don, you're you're willing to do that?
I am.
Okay, very good. And Mr. Watson has already volunteered?
He did.
Okay. Um, I can consult. How's that?
Okay, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, very well. Um, the other item we had was the zoning exception for Beecher Street, and we still don't have a uh,
No, so.
Site plan from them.
I I gave them a deadline to have that to me. They didn't meet the deadline. I don't know what's going on with their person who's doing their stuff. Um, yeah, I I'm not even aware of when this will be.
Okay.
At this point, they they do have a variance because of um, a storm sewer, and I believe a sanitary sewer that runs through it. So there there were issues with the site that kind of held them up, but I don't think that it should have held them up this far, so. I I don't know if we have to give a date to table, but.
Not right.
Well, at this point, uh, given, you know, that we're already into the month, the ways, if you wanted to table it to August and then if you want to date certain, and then we can review it at that time, that would seem more reasonable. I I would think their odds of making the July meeting aren't that great at this point.
I would say their communication with me does not show that July will be feasible.
Okay, well, since it was tabled until the June sixth meeting, um, I guess technically we should untable it.
And do something.
And do something.
Correct.
Uh, but I'm not sure what that would be. Let's see. Because we don't actually have anything before us to vote on. Uh, it's not like we're going to deny it or approve it. Um,
No, like I say, I I think it would be fair to table it for two months. Now, I gave him one month. That didn't work in two months.
Okay.
Then review it at that time.
You can put a date on it.
It's better practice, but uh, you know.
Would everything have to be renoticed then?
We we didn't, we really conducted the public hearing already, so I don't think that's the issue.
Could you just say until such time as staff feels it's presentable to the commission?
Hey, you know, I we'd, we'd make that work if you wanted to do that.
Why don't we do that? I'm just trying to so it doesn't go up in August and they're still not ready. Yes. And then we have to open and close it and.
Yeah, just like now, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Can I do that all in one motion?
Please do, Robert.
I move, I move to untable this resolution and then further table it until such time as staff feels it's ready to come back to the commission. Support.
Okay, there's motion from Love and uh, support from Gloss. Any discussions? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well. Motion carries. Um, is there any other business to come before us? Anybody in the audience or online that wishes to address the planning commission? Apparently not. We would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
For all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
I'm not sure this was quickly struggling in my clothes. Not yet, I'm happy for this meeting.
There's this big maple. Lost a third of the big storm. Took the rest of them down. Absolutely watching this guy.
Record.